Good evening. I call to order our special city council meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, November twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the council are present with the exception of council member Pack, who is in traffic and will be joining us here shortly. We're also joined by our council office staff, by Mayor Burton, various members of his staff, and various members of the public. First item of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will be letting the Pledge of Allegiance tonight by my little boy, Henry McConaughey.
Will all of the audience please rise? Please, please repeat. It's a pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Definitely a proud father moment when you're able to watch your oldest son lead the city council in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we have an item that is not so routine, which is the filling of a midterm vacancy for District Two. We'll start off a little bit with an explanation as to why and how that'll be done. We'll move on to candidate interviews, and then council will have a discussion and possibly point somebody to fulfill the remainder of the term. We'll start with a little bit of an explanation background. Alan, were you going to give us the explanation or is that tangy?
I can give that. So, the state code provides the opportunity or provides the guidance on how to fill a midterm vacancy. As you know, in District Two, council member Melissa Wurden has moved out of state and vacated her seat. It was discussed at the meeting in October. The council passed a resolution setting the date for tonight to interview candidates that applied. The code has recently been updated, so the process is you would... I'm just getting my notes here. You would interview the candidates that are here. It is in a public setting, so the public is welcome. The staff are welcome to remain here while you conduct the interview. The pertinent section of code is Utah Code Annotated twenty-eight dash one dash five-ten. So after the interview, you will then take an initial vote. We're going to be using Slido. Mr. Hallmark will be giving you the link if he hasn't already on how to use Slido. And on the initial vote, if a candidate receives four votes, we will move to the resolution, have a roll call vote on the resolution, and Ms. Sloan would provide the oath of office for that individual, and they could be seated tonight. If there is a tie, or I'm sorry, if someone does not have a majority, so it could be a three-two-one or a three-three-zero on the three candidates that have applied, then the first initial vote eliminates the least, the person with the least number of votes, leaving just two candidates. There would then be a second vote, again using Slido. You'll need to give us some time to update the names based on how you vote. And those votes will be anonymous. It'll just have a total. How many? Who got how many votes? On the second vote, if that remains a tie, no one has the majority. No one has four votes. It's three-three, for example. Then the role of the municipal legislative body has ended, and it goes to a coin toss, which the council has had happened before. And that now would be run by Ms. Sloan, who's the city recorder. So she would define which candidate is head, which candidate is tails. We would flip a silver dollar that I believe Mr. Duncan or Mr. Murray has. And it would be done in front of the legislative body, and how the coin lands is how is who would be appointed for the remainder of the term, which would conclude December thirty-first of this year.
All right. Are there any questions with what Mr. Anderson shared so far? Not seen any. We'll proceed to the interview portion of the of the meeting. And what we'll do, the reason we're not streaming this live is we wanted to make sure that every candidate had the opportunity to hear the questions fresh and answer them without necessarily having too many distractions or being able to listen remote and then jump in a little bit pre-prepared, if that if that makes sense. So what we'll do is we'll have one candidate out in four-year. The other candidate will be here. They'll respond to questions from the council. Each member of the council will have the ability, the opportunity to ask one question. They don't have to ask a question if they don't feel necessary, but we'll have that option. And then after that, the candidate, first candidate's invited to have a seat. We'll have the second candidate come in and have, ideally, that same question again for each for each candidate. With that, Mr. Anderson, selection of the candidate who gets questions first. Shall we break in that coin?
If you'd like to do that, we can. We can do the coin.
Seems to be tradition. There's always some sort of coin toss, so just making sure it's it's in there.
Yep.
I was gonna say we could go alphabetical, but we'd have to go by like the third letter of their second name.
We had talked about doing reverse alphabetical order by by something similar. That's... Can you, Ms. Sloan, could you turn on the microphone?
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll do this. You'll be heads and you will be tails.
Mr. Hallmark.
Do you like to kick or receive?
All right.
Do you want to receive, kick, or defend the goal?
Okay. Please have a seat, and then if you would pull the microphone over in front of you. The information that you had submitted when declaring candidacy for this opening has been provided to the city council. It's attached to the agenda. So with that, if you would just state your name.
Robert Bennett.
Mr. Bennett, we'll go.
Yeah, and speak into it there.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're directional microphones, so if the audio comes from the side, they don't they don't pick up.
Gotcha.
And who would like to begin with a question tonight? Councilmember Jacob's getting there. All right, I'll go ahead and start. Mr. Bennett, in your experience of watching the city council, what do you feel has been one of the biggest mistakes the council has made?
That is a very difficult question. I'm sure members of the council would love to pipe in on that question. I actually am one of the citizens that's most interested in seeing what our elected officials are able to accomplish rather than focusing on what they have not accomplished. So I, in my time spent attending city council meetings, have not noticed anything extremely discernible that I would say is a mistake that I could say that the council has represented itself with. I've seen lots of citizens from neighborhoods that have had many trucks and dumpsters dumpsters and all kinds of things going through their neighborhood that showed up so that they could have their voices heard. And as I observed the way that the council accepted the information from them, I believe that their voices were heard. I think that any citizen that shows up to a city council meeting deserves to have their voices heard, whether or not the individuals agree with that position that's being taken or not. The fact that we have a representative form of government is critically important. And so I do not have anything in particular that I could say that the council is not doing right other than it is in all of our best interest that you continue to work as hard as you can to fulfill the responsibilities that you've been given by your electorate.
Thank you. Who'd like to go next?
Sure.
Jacob.
Sure. Oh, I'll ask you a question. This is obviously a very brief assignment, so to speak.
Yes.
Screen's not on. I don't know where the button is. That's okay. Knowing that this is such a brief assignment, you don't you don't get a lot of time to advance an agenda or any particular policy goals you might have for two meetings. Is there anything in particular that you know is coming up on an agenda or coming up in the next month that you feel, not not necessarily strongly about, but that you would look forward to having a vote on?
I appreciate that question. I think that the thing that I'm most personally honored by the possibility of having this presented to me would be to sit on the board of canvas and be able to accept the electorate's votes that took place by the West Jordan citizens. I feel that that is a civic responsibility and probably the highest form of giving of ourselves to our community that we can do. Being able to accept those votes that took place and certify those election results is probably the the thing I am most looking forward to in this responsibility.
Councilmember Bloom.
First off, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Being able to serve the community is is a really high honor, and and I appreciate anybody that steps up to do that. My question to you is, why? Why are why are you here? I mean, and it's honest, general, genuine question.
That is a very, very good question that I've asked myself many times. And a lot of people would say to me, why are you doing this for two meetings? You know, what what is important enough to make you sacrifice your time to be willing to do that? And I remember my time on the city council, which is almost twenty years ago, that I was able to take a small role, one-seventh of a of a vote, to be able to have some wonderful things take place in West Jordan. I was able to contribute to the vote for the Justice Center and for the Veterans Memorial Park naming and a number of other things that happened that just gave me pride in my community and made me grateful that I lived in West Jordan. I love West Jordan, and to answer your question, why am I doing this? It's because this is home. This is the place that I have come to love more than any place else in the state of Utah or in the United States. And so I'm willing to do anything it takes to help my fellow citizens, which happen to be in this responsibility in District Two, so that they can have a voice on the council, even if it's only for two meetings. And that's something that I've been asking myself, is that really enough for you to take this step to volunteer? And I actually think it is, because all of our city council members have received the the will of their electorate to give them the votes for sitting on the council and representing their interests. I do not want my fellow citizens to go for a period of time without having that representation. So even though it seems like it's something that's not incredibly important, I think following the rule of law is an important thing for all government entities to do, and that's where I would volunteer to be appointed to this position.
Thank you.
So for those listening a little bit later, council member Pack was able to join us here at six fourteen. Councilmember Pack, we're going through. Each of us have the opportunity to ask one question of the candidate if they would like to. If you'd like to now, you're welcome to do so.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Mr. Bennett, nice to see you. You too. Thank you. So different than in election, it's more of a job interview on an appointment versus a motion where you're trying to balance and ask the same question to each candidate. And so apologies if this has already been asked, but one of the major issues in being on city council is experience in administering multimillion-dollar budgets, especially since that's on the agenda tonight, and whoever's appointed would be seated and have a vote in issues that deal with lots of dollars from taxpayers. Could you please elaborate on any experience that you have in administering large budgets, specifically multimillion-dollar budgets with many different entities having to allocate those those funds?
Okay. That is not something I have done recently, but it is something that I do have experience with. When I was serving on the council, we had experience of going through and approving the budgetary process. It was different at that point. We had a different form of government than we do now. So the responsibilities of the council as a legislative body is something that I think really requires a lot of, not as much soul searching as it is intellect searching, going through and seeing the things that are being requested to have the council's approval of and applying for those things that make the most sense to the city, which the seven of you get to determine. I have looked at the agenda tonight, and I reviewed the budget to see what kind of information was in there. And unfortunately, I did not have the time to call Mr. Allen Anderson or any of the other people that have the the details about the budget items. But it is something that I do have some familiarity with, so that if I were to cast a vote tonight, it would not be completely out of the blue.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Thank you, Chair.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Whitelock.
May I ask him two, because the first one that I want to know is answered by the other applicant on his application. Will you be able to attend both of the meetings?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. The other question I want to ask is, what do you think the biggest challenge facing West Jordan in the next six months is?
That is a very good question. Wow. That is something that I've not pondered before this meeting. I would have to say that with all the construction projects that are happening around the city, one of the dangers that comes about is construction fatigue, that the citizens get to the point where they feel like everywhere they go in the city is being restricted by some construction project, which, when it's completed, they're only too happy to have that happen. But as we get up to that point, it becomes more and more difficult for them to maintain an even perspective. So I would think that increasing the ability of the city to involve the citizens in understanding the need of these projects and how they will benefit the the body of the city is probably one of the things that I would place as much emphasis on as possible.
Councilmember Gray.
You know, Pamela stole my question. And I wanted to respond to Kay Lane's, that the six-month challenge is getting back into City Hall. Sorry, I couldn't resist that, Mayor. I think I'll pass. I I I think the questions that have been asked are are good, and I think I'll pass.
All right. Mr. Bennett, let me prepare my timer. And within the next two minutes or less, are there any closing remarks you would like to share with the council?
I appreciate this opportunity. I respect the rule of law. I studied at the University of Utah, the political science subject, and gained a great admiration for the processes that our founders took place to make it so that we could have a fair and efficient government. And I see that government operating very well in the city of West Jordan. It makes me proud to be a citizen, and whether I get selected for this position tonight or not, I will be very proud to call myself a citizen of West Jordan City. And I hope that as you deliberate and make your decision tonight, that you'll just realize that there is no wrong decision. Whatever decision you make is something I will completely respect. And I think that you have an excellent opportunity to make a difference to the third-largest city in the state of Utah. And I wish you the best.
Thank you. Okay, you're welcome to have a seat, and I just shot Mr. Anderson a note that we're ready. Greg, could you check and make sure he saw that? He's just right in those doors. No, no, Alan should just be right inside, in the witness area. Yeah, so if his phones are here, texting him wouldn't have helped, would it? Yeah, just right. Well, that was anticipation. All right. So as, just so everybody's hearing the same thing, we do have the information that was submitted when you declared your candidacy for this particular seat. That's been made available to the council and to the public as well. And we'll each have an opportunity to ask a question of you. If you would, as we get started, would you please share your name for the recording?
Bob Bedore.
All right, Mr. Bedore. First question will be for me. And as you've been watching the city council, what, in your opinion, is one of the biggest mistakes we've made?
I I really be hard to say, because a lot of the things I've been seeing over the last couple of months have been very sort of cut and dry elements that have been brought in. So I think in the meetings that I've seen, I'm not seeing mistakes per se. Just very, like I said, they've they've been mostly rudimentary procedures that I've I've seen through here. But I I would like to see, though, where we've had so much of the Ninetieth South group come in and talk. I keep thinking that I'm going to see in another upcoming meeting that we as a council, and probably this is something done again, not in the council, because the council doesn't talk back and forth with the people, but to know that the council has met with the people on the property and have had had some talks with them. I talked with some of the people out after and explained to them that just coming and saying, you can't do this, isn't going to work for the council, because it's going to happen. You need to come to the council and say, here's where we think a solution can be. You know, don't come with just saying, I've got a lot of signatures. Come with solutions. And so I talked with them about, you know, here's things, some elements that you could bring. Talk with your people and see what can work in there. And I saw that they actually were doing that when they talked about one of the last meetings, where they talked about, you know, where they would most like a streetlight. And that was me. I talked to them and said, you've got about three places that you could possibly put a streetlight. You're not going to get two of them. You're not going to get three of them. You're maybe going to get one of them. Come to council as a group and decide which is the location you think would work best for you. And that was something they did. But so I don't know what was done behind scenes with the people, but I know that it's it's kind of a weird thing in these council meetings where these people talk, 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 and then they just leave. And so it's hard to see, and I'm excited to see, you know, what it's going to be like from your side, to know what you're doing to help those people, because sitting here, I'm like, one, I don't know what they're doing to help these people, but I certainly hope I get a chance to do it. But then I went and talked to them afterwards. So there's kind of a long answer, that I don't know of them as a mistake. But from an outsider's view, it seemed kind of weird.
Councilmember Jacob.
Well, the question that I asked Rob doesn't apply as much to you, because with Rob, the horizon...
He's better looking.
Well, I I was asking about his barber, so you know, we got different.
I'm getting there. This this campaign kind of...
Tell me about it. No, but my question for for Rob, just for transparency, was, you know, you've only got a month. You know, is there anything coming up in that month? I guess I could ask you the same question.
Sure.
Relative to taking office now versus five, six weeks from now, is there anything on the agenda that you know of in the next month that you would particularly want to weigh in on, you know, where where you would make a difference in the in the immediate short term?
I don't know so much in making a difference, but in the desire to get to work, that I do have. Doesn't matter if it's the where I said somewhat the easy kind of things that I saw earlier. And by easy, I just mean do we get this money that we've already been given and now hand it over to the people who it's supposed to go to? Yeah, that that kind of stuff I can, I don't think I'll make any big difference there. But I really want to get to work, and that's that's important to me. But I also, I will be very honest in saying that I was kind of excited with the idea that maybe, excuse me, that maybe a citizen could have this moment for a month to see what it's like. I kind of liked the idea of that. In fact, all the people when I was talking to and going on and knocking on doors, I would tell people, the position I'm going to be, I'm running for will actually be open for a little while, and you should go apply. And, you know, obviously, I was not very persuasive in that, but but I tried, because I do think that it would be great to have them sit and just kind of know what it's like and what goes on. So I think that that was a strong thing. Rob's actually, you know, obviously has had this position before, did a fine job, and and I I believe, obviously, a fine human being. And either way, you go for this month, or if you go the third route of just winging it for another month and and hiding from the lieutenant governor for a little bit, either one of those, I think will be fine. But as for me, I don't know fully the impact I'll have in that month, but I know that I'm excited to get to work, and whether that is tonight, next week, or in two thousand and twenty-four, I'm going to get that opportunity, and I'm excited just as soon as you're ready for me.
Councilmember Bloom.
Like I, sorry, getting over a cold. Like I had mentioned before, thank you for stepping up, and thank you for being willing to serve the city, and thank you for the application. It's such an honor to serve the residents here. And my question is a general, why do you want to be on council? I mean, congratulations, by the way, but why do you want to be here? Why do you want to be up here?
Well, I had a thing many years ago, and I don't even, it seemed like it was about twelve, fifteen years ago, where I was doing some stuff with the arts here in West Jordan and really wanting to push what I could do and felt like I wasn't getting anywhere with the council. I'm like trying to offer free teaching things, going to schools, and it just seemed to be met with, mm, no. It's not what we're where we're going, and we had run into a big problem with the Sugar Factory Playhouse and all of this stuff. And so finally, I just decided, well, forget this. And I went to Midvale and have been on their Arts Council for the last, man, several years. And in doing that, amazing things we've been able to get done. I do that teaching in the elementary schools. I go and I teach kids. We've had, you know, real success with some of our outreach programs with the, I I got them to take their their concerts in the parks on Fridays during the summer concert series and say, stop bringing in, you know, for three thousand dollars, bringing in somebody from Colorado because they're huge in Colorado. Well, no one in Utah knows them. Let's change it to a Utah-only festival where it's just these local acts, because those local acts will promote themselves. By doing that, we saved a lot of money, and we're doing local acts. I also convinced them to stop treating the Midvale Performing Arts Center like a handout. It's a theater. I used to own a theater. Let's make money with that theater. And so we did that, and that shut down or brought down the amount of money the city would then give the Arts Council, because we were supplying our own money, and we only needed a little bit to keep going. So I was doing those kind of things, and I had talked to my wife several times about, one of these days, I'm going to run for the city council in West Jordan. And my wife finally said, put up or shut up. And that's what got me where I am. But yeah, I I want to try to just, and it's not about the arts. I'm not just only about the arts, but like I said, I was just feeling this thing of why? Why am I not listened to? I'm a citizen who wants to do something in the city. Well, now I'm a I'm a citizen who hopefully can help other citizens do something in the city.
Councilmember Pack.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for meeting with us tonight.
Thank you.
So great questions. I I like that we can have some subjective questions on mistakes and desires for service and agenda item concerns. And I'd like to take a turn into objective qualifications on substantive skill sets, especially since if seated tonight, the first agenda item is discussing multimillion dollar adjustments to a budget. And could you please elaborate on any experience that you have in administering multimillion dollar budgets or large budgets that are fraught with many components where you allocate money here, you can't have it there, there's a finite amount of resources. How do you decide where to allocate that money? Any experience on budgeting?
Sure, I appreciate that. And I did go through the the packet that was given in regards to what will be voted on later tonight. But to me, you know, yeah, looking at a million dollar budget is big. But it's really no different than looking at my family budget. Or when I owned the theater I spoke of earlier, the the budget there, you just add a couple more zeros. And I know it sounds grandiose, but it's really the same sort of thing. When I had my theater and I was told businesses fail in the first year. And if you can make it to that first year, you're probably okay. Well, that wasn't true. It was skin of my teeth first five years. And one thing that was important about that was I really just set up a thing where when someone would tell me this is what we want to do. It was, well, let's answer two questions first. Do we really, really, really need it? And do we have the money for it right now? And in doing that business, if I didn't have both yeses, it was find something else. Find another solution. And there was times I had to do that. And it was times that I know that my theater wasn't quite what it could have been. But it was because I didn't have the money to make it what I could have been and I wasn't going to go into debt with my first business. I wasn't going to do that because I didn't know if I could get out. If I stayed out of debt and I had to close down, I'd be okay. But if I had to go into debt and do it, would just make it worse. So for the first few years, that was always the answer and we never took a loan or did anything, no credit cards, anything with that business. It was if we need that, we're going to have to work harder. We're going to have to find the money, we're going to have to do other shows, we're going to have to do this. So my answer to that is I try to make sure that I'm not going further into debt or doing things that I don't have the money for. And if it's something that's needed, but not needed, 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 I see if we can find another solution. Is there another way that we can get what we want that is maybe less money? Or we go back and look at, are there things that we are spending money on that aren't in that first category of do we really, really, really need it? If we don't need that, stop spending money on that and we'll put it to where we really, really, really need it. So that answers your question, but it's basically the same. I don't look at it as million dollars and, you know, my my hundred dollar budget. It's just zeros and it all comes down to the same thing and that's common sense.
Great, thanks, Mr. Bedore, having been chairman of two theaters myself, I understand. Thank you, Mr. Bedore. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember Whitelock.
What do you feel is the biggest challenge facing a city in the next six months?
The next six months, wow. Well, I think we're all still feeling a lot of the same as we talk to people. It's a it's a great divide within our city. It's a divide of of people who you know, it it comes down to everything. What comes down to housing, people who own homes here in West Jordan don't want high density housing. And they don't realize that no one is able, you know, not not no one, but people aren't able to move into West Jordan because it's becoming too expensive, it's prohibitive. And we're not going to be able to grow that way. But the people are, like I said, they're divided on this and they become divided on every single thing. So we've got a lot of things like, you know, what are we going to do about the growth? What are we going to do about some of the various elements? Plus, they don't want taxes to raise, but if they stunt the growth, then taxes will have to rise. So we've got a lot of things that I think we have to do that I think a council can work towards with the the idea of different laws and ordinances that we're going to pass. We can also work very hard to bring a city together and stop the divide because with the divide, we can do that through information. So that people are seeing fully why certain things are being done, maybe why they're not being done. What we can do, I'd like to really work on building a pride within this city that's not so divisive. We can see it on the social media of, you know, just people are are so used now to just saying what they they want to say and being emboldened to do that. And that's great, but we also have to back that up with the right information that can bring a city together because I think when we can bring the city together and bring it together in a sense of pride, that's when we're able to all work together as a city to do the things that are best for the city. So I'm still going to be very wet behind the ears when it comes to the full-on elements that are going to be under my purview on this council and what I'm able to really kind of change and what are those hot button issues other than what I've learned from being canvassing, talking to people, because that's all I'm getting now is the people. That and I've talked to some members on the council of, you know, is this really a concern? But I need to be really brought to speed quickly on these things and that's something that I will do and work real hard to do. And that's like I when I said I want to get to work. Because I want to learn the job and I want to learn it from this side and that's just what I've been trying to glean from being out here in the, you know, in the peanut gallery. So I want to be there, but I I really think in what I've seen a lot with the city and in talking to people and when knocking on the doors, the divide in our city right now is tough and no matter what you try to do with a city divided, you're still upsetting a group. And I think if we can find a way to reach you know, more of a cohesive effort within the city and not a divisive effort within the city, that if we can do that as a council, I think we're going to go a lot stronger in getting some of these, some of these elements done. So still a lot to learn from my board.
Could you ask your other questions while so they both get the same questions? It it was, but for those who are watching at home and may not have access to the packet.
The other question was, are you able to attend both meetings in December?
I the very first meeting, I am actually going to be out of town, but I can do Zoom meeting on that. I had my tenth anniversary in the middle of November, but I couldn't leave because obviously this race was very tight. Every day I could spend knocking on doors and doing stuff I did. So I promised my wife after the election, we'd go on our tenth anniversary. So next week I will be out of town for that. But I've already told my wife that on the sixth, if I am put into this position that from the Magic Kingdom, I will be zooming like an idiot in line.
Well, you won't be the first person.
But but that that is my plan. I have already let my wife know that from this point to this point, I will be engaged in what is my new job.
Right. And then with up to two, with it within two minutes or so, are there any closing remarks you would like to share with the council?
Uh, no, just I'm I'm very grateful for all this. You know, getting to know some of you a little bit more through this course has been great. I'm so excited to work with you. I'm very sorry to see Councilman Pack leaving. And kind of Council McConaughey, I didn't get a chance to really talk with you, but I look forward to working with the people that are here with all of you. There's so much I can learn from the from all of you here and that's what I will plan to do. I also, like I said very early on, if you decide to put Rob in, that's that's cool. I think I think he's amazing. I think he's great for the city. If you decide to leave it vacant, I'm fine with that and if you decide to start. Now, I'm I'm so easygoing right now because I just want to get to work and whatever day you, as the day one of your job, that's when I'll get to work.
All right. Thank you very much. You're welcome to have a seat. Mr. Anderson, do you want to talk us through where we go from here?
Where we will go from here is Mr. Hallmark will provide you a slight old link if you hasn't already. And you'll cast your vote and you will see the results of that. And if one of the candidates has four, that is, that would end it. If it's not four, then we can move on to the next step.
Both for the council and for the benefit of those who may be watching the recording later. Although we only heard from two, we do have three candidates who have declared their desire to serve in this position. So one of them is not here this evening, so that's why we've only done interviews with the two, but all three are eligible for consideration.
I didn't know abstain was going to be an option. Now I'm like, ooh. I thought I had this all figured out until I saw that. Just kidding, just kidding.
In in prior times, there has been a request to have abstained, so we included that on this one. What we're looking for is that in the blue background there on the upper right-hand corner is the number three right now. We're looking at to be numbers have a six, then everybody is voted. So what this does is this is three, three. So we go to a second round of voting. And if it's and if it's three, three, then we will do a coin toss. Okay, so now it is out of your hands.
Good thing we warmed up that coin.
Yeah, so now it's now it's up to the city recorder. Miss Long will handle it from here.
The moment I've been waiting for all day. All right.
Chair, is this the same coin from six years ago when this happened?
I don't believe so. Apparently it is.
So instead of flipping it, like trying to be all cool, I'm not going to do that this time. I'm just going to shake it like this. So we'll do your heads and your tails. All right. It's heads.
Well, you'll enjoy your vacation a little more.
Yeah, would you like to explain?
Now, what what you will do now is vote on this resolution twenty-three dash zero seven zero. You'll want to put Mr. Bennett in the blank. And then following this, the resolution does have in section two that we will perform the oath of office and he can sit on the dais.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty-three dash, well, have we really gone to seventy resolutions this year? We're doing too much nonsense. I moved to approve resolution twenty-three dash seventy, appointing Rob Bennett to fill the vacancy on the West Jordan City Council District.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember McConaughey. Any discussion to the motion? Councilmember Jacob.
Yeah, I just want to say that this was, you guys are both did excellent in the interview, both excellent, I mean excellent choices. We're not going wrong here, nothing's, nothing's nothing, there there wasn't a bad choice tonight here. So I appreciate, I appreciate both of you for being here, putting your names in the hat, one of Dirk's hats, no doubt. And 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 just being willing to do this. Rob, this will be kind of fun for a couple of weeks and Bob will see you in January. And this is a, yeah, this is good. I appreciate, I I, you know, coin flips are never the way I want to see it come down to. But at the same time, it's kind of nice when you have two good choices to have a coin flip, so. But the let the fates decide, so so to speak. And and Alan can commiserate. And so can David with the other, so you know.
Councilmember Pat.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Basically the same comments that I really appreciate. Everyone who decides to step up and volunteer. And it does bring back memories from six years ago with Mr. Anderson and me. And after I I recall the process being even more rigorous. I I believe that the police chief had to hold a hat and the fire chief had to certify which was heads and tails. I mean, it it was an even more in-depth process. Do you remember that, Mr. Anderson? And then we had newspaper reporters there and of course they came up to me after, I think they were fishing for you know, if I was so upset that this came down to a coin flip. But but I remember just being inspired to say, and I truly believe this tonight as well, that God is even in the coin flips. You know, we we say one nation under God as we start each meeting. And I really believe that whether election or appointment or coin flip, there's certain things that certain people are supposed to do at certain times with certain service. So I'm sure that Mr. Bennett will be able to contribute in his own fashion. And that's what I love about city council with seven different perspectives and viewpoints. And Mr. Bedore, thank you for stepping up and best wishes with your service for the next four years, starting next calendar year. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Again, I'd like to thank both, all all three who declared a desire and a willingness to serve the needs of the city. Thank you very much. I mean, I I was excited to have a few weeks to work with either of you. I I wish it could be both. But thank you, thank you very much. Okay, with that, Ms. Sloan.
You need, you need to vote first on the motion.
Probably a good call. The whole coin toss to figure out what the resolution is threw me off a bit. Okay, so let's go to Ms. Quick for a vote.
Chair McConaughey.
Hi.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom.
Yes.
Councilmember Pat.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes six to zero.
All right. Now, Ms. Long.
Let's stand right up here. Now have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robert Bennett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support, obey and defend.
That I'll support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of West Jordan.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of West Jordan.
And that I'll discharge the duties.
And that I'll discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think you should make Chris sign the resolution before Rob signs the oath. Is it printed, ready to go? That's why I picture, that's why I press it. You don't have that PDF file, right? Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. And for the record, Councilmember Bennett joined us on the dais at six forty-nine. Okay. That brings us to a public hearing for ordinance twenty-three dash forty-one. Today, we have a little bit of a special agenda and we weren't necessarily wanting to have any other business other than the appointment on the agenda. However, this council has repeatedly told the mayor's office that we would be happy to do anything that we can to help expedite some projects such as the expansion of seventy-eight hundred South. They took us up on that offer and rather than waiting another week, we can make a little bit of progress by hearing this item here and now, so. Ms. Stack, please.
Thank you. And the reason we're bringing this to you this evening is that we have a contract on the line that we need to sign before the following meeting. So the pricing is only good for a short period of time with this contractor and we're really anxious to get this project moving forward. So thank you very much for opening up another item onto your agenda. How do I move forward? Oh, it did. All right, there are several different items. This is not a typical budget amendment. A normal budget amendment would just bring new requests for you, to you, but this is the first budget amendment of the year. So we have several items. First ones, you have given me authority to carry forward anything that was already under contract last fiscal year that wasn't complete. However, I feel like it's best practice to bring it to you as a council and inform you of those things that I see that were contracted that needed to be carried forward from the last budget year that was not spent. And so that would be what we call a carry forward. Grant funded, we have had several grants come to us over the last six months and we're excited to bring those to you. Projects that might not have sufficient funding at this time to be awarded, which is similar to the one I'm bringing to you or the reason that this one came forward so quickly. New requests, which are new projects that we've identified since we adopted the budget and then removing or delaying any request, our request. So most of these are capital projects. The total budget, when people ask you what the total budget is, it kind of gets confusing. You'll look at revenue or you'll look expenditures. Well, you have to look at both. It's whichever one is greater. Then you add those up. So our total budget as adopted at the beginning of the fiscal year was two hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. We're asking for additional funding of twelve million dollars. And your total adopted and amended budget will be two hundred and forty-nine million, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and two hundred and three. Okay, that you see the number, two hundred and forty-nine million dollars and some change. Our first one is our Class C road funds. We have two projects. They're both carry forwards. As you know, Class C's construction period starts in April or May when it gets warm enough to pour some asphalt and concrete. And it carries forward and and through October. So a lot of the contracts are entered into at the end of the fiscal year and then carry forward into the beginning of the fiscal year. So we'd be using reserves that were unspent last year. Safe sidewalks is a hundred and forty thousand dollars in addition to what you've already budgeted. And pavement maintenance is nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So this adds on to the budget that you previously approved. Capital projects and we have several different types of capital projects. The first one would be a roads capital project. We have started design work on eighty-six hundred South with Ivory performing that work right now, Ivory Development. And they will be performing that work. We received four million dollars in legislated funding to do eighty-six hundred South or our portion of eighty-six hundred South. Ivory will be doing their portion of eighty-six hundred South and paying for it out of their pockets. But this is that small piece of unpaved roadway on sixty-seven hundred West between Spring Oak and eighty-six hundred South. That's our responsibility. Our estimate right now is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't have a final construction number on it, but that is an engineer's estimate from our city engineer. So we're asking to budget for that project before we enter into the agreement with Ivory Development. Parks Capital, we have the Wheels Park amenities. This is a grant that we received from the Utah Outdoor Recreation in in the amount of half a million dollars. So we'd be receiving that money and then putting it towards the amenities at the Wheels Park. We've received several Big Bend grants. You'll see them listed here, but there's well over one point five million dollars in grants, which we're really grateful for. Parks Capital, this is another one, Constitution Park. We were asking you to remove the funding for a project that was budgeted. It was budgeted at four hundred thousand dollars. This would be to replace the irrigation system from using culinary water to using secondary water. This project would cost four hundred thousand dollars for the change. But the bill for our culinary water is only four thousand to forty-five hundred dollars a year. So it would take a hundred years for us to recover the cost. Didn't seem like a very good ROI. So we're asking to remove this project. We'll just do the maintenance on the culinary water system that waters this park and call it a day. Veterans Memorial Park Master Plan, that was currently being budgeted out of what we called minor projects. But minor projects tend to really add up quickly over time. And so we have fifty thousand dollars in that budget, but it will be needed for minor projects. We would like this to be a standalone item. It's currently contracted for fifty-five thousand dollars. A portion of it was done last year. And this would be the portion of the contract that's remaining, which would be twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. So this is a new item for you. Unless you want us to use minor projects again. The Gold Star Monument again is being funded out of minor projects and other savings throughout Parks Capital. We feel like it would be best used as a standalone project with a fifty thousand dollar budget. The Wheels Park has a carry forward in its construction of unused. So we estimated we were going to spend one point five million dollars last year, but construction didn't go as quickly as we thought it would.
You saw my, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The the Gold Star Memorial. The original cost was sixty-five. Are we okay with the fifty? Or that will that fifty will get us through till June and whatever else we.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. That'll get us through that initial order and contract for the monument, but apparently it's about eighteen months out on them like constructing the monument.
Councilmember Pack had a question.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify, that's not going to be inclusive of two new flag poles for POW MIA and also Space Force. That's just for the memorial. It's not a comprehensive redo of that area.
Good question. You're correct. And those will come in as we finish this Veterans Memorial Park Master Plan. And as we install the memorial, we'll be installing those flag poles as well, but I believe it will likely be in the next fiscal year.
Certainly for elaboration.
It's also not inclusive of some of the other site costs. This is, this is getting us started, but we don't, we don't have the full site layout, so there will be some irrigation, landscape repair, flatwork, et cetera.
Case. So we've gotten through the carry forward of the Wheels Park. General capital, this is a project that again, we started last year, but it takes a long time apparently to get supplies. So the HVAC sent for the Justice Center, the chief will be very happy with this project being done at some point. We are needing to carry forward nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that were unspent. And once everything has been contracted, we're about eighty-five thousand dollars short on this project as well. It's about a one point eight million dollar project. Any questions so far outside of what you've already asked? Okay, this is the CDBG fund. You amended the CDB action plan for twenty-two thousand and twenty-three. These were the changes that you adopted in that action plan, and so we're just pushing them through into a formal budget amendment. The Grants Fund, again, more grant money, which is great. We received money from the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District Grant Assistance Program to zero scape the Old Rock Church. We've received money from Salt Lake County Water Conservation to zero scape in the city hall parking lot and it's the area over against like where we're meeting up with the park. We have some grant funded police equipment that you've already approved these grants moving forward and then some assistance for the mental health and wellness program. For the Water Fund, we are asking you to remove the well eight pump project. That was a project that we believed would be moving forward, but as we have changed water behavior towards more conservation, we are concerned that we don't need another well at this point in time. We will need this well eventually with growth as it continues or if behavior were to change. But at this point in time, we're just using our our allowance from the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District Contract. And if we need additional water, we have additional wells that we can call on. But at this point, we don't believe that we should be adding another well. Councilmember Whitelock.
Delaying that based on behavior makes me a little bit nervous because behavior can change anytime. But more concern is it's usually cheaper to build today than tomorrow. So long term, is this really going to be better financially for the city?
I will have to look at Mr. Davenport for more elaboration on that project.
Right now. We are just meeting our contract with Jordan Valley Water. So if we were to bring this well online right now, besides just building this well, we would also be paying money back to Jordan Valley because our contract right now is take or pay. And so delaying this, even if it's for a year, would, I think would save us money. The question you bring up, will it cost us more to build in a year? I don't really know. That that is a good question and I don't think I have an answer for that.
Yes, we can build a well and not use the water out of the well.
Correct.
So. That's my only concern there. I think that delaying may cost us more in the long run.
I think in addition to this, one of the concerns maybe also be on both Mr. Davenport and myself is this is would be using water impact fee funds. And as you know, the water impact fee funds are currently negative for the city and about three point five million dollars. So I need to collect what we've already spent and then and then pushing it further into the negative was a concern for both of us. So that would be why we recommended it. I I can understand where your thinking is going for sure. But I, again, we don't have a crystal ball. We are seeing some costs come down as inflation rises and and the economy changes a bit. We may see some of those costs come down and it may be a time for us to take advantage of that building and we would come to the council if we see maybe that opening. But at this point, it would, it it seems prudent to delay this project for a while.
You were first.
I know, it's waiting to be called on.
Councilmember Jake.
Every now and then it's appropriate. I was just gonna bring up kind of the flip side of of that question is taking the one point two million dollars out of a well eight pump, it's not necessarily needed right now and putting it somewhere else. Are these higher priority projects that that do need to be funded now? And if we kept the well eight pump online, how would we fund these projects as well? That's that's my question.
That would be exactly the next line down Greg has recommended that we use. Because the water impact fees and the water utility are, they're all in one account, so to speak, right? If the reserves are, so when I say that the water impact fee is negative three point five million dollars, the water utility fund is subsidizing that until such time as it has recovered to a zero balance. Which will happen when we when we have permits drawn down, but as you know, developments slow down considerably. And so it's going to take a little longer for us to get to that point. We have a real need with this thirteen thirteen hundred West Waterline. We've seen quite a few water breaks in that area. And Mr. Davenport recommends that we take out this one point two million dollar well eight pump, our well eight project overall, and replace it with a utility project, which would be the thirteen hundred West Waterline. Do I think that we could manage both projects at the same time? Maybe, but I think that it would still put us in a position where we may be compromised or need to increase water rates and we don't want to do that. Well.
Thank you.
We don't want to recommend that. You do that, not me.
So. Let me wrap. With with putting this, the the well eight back in. What would that? So I guess I'm having this, I'm I'm trying to grab, wrap my head around this. As I look at the the rest of the list that's on the screen. The the one point two million for well eight pump is offset by the one point two in thirteenth West. Thank you, by the way, for screwing up thirteenth West for another year. When when somebody talked about construction fatigue, thirteenth West is it, by the way, but.
Seventieth was their first.
Seventieth was their first. Oh, yes, I suffered from that one for a couple of years. But that we we were talking about then on Zone One Cemetery Water Tank, four hundred and twenty with and that coming out of impact fees. So my question is, when we're all said and done with this screen, what is going to be the water, the the ultimate result on the water impact fee reserve? And what's the ultimate? What what will be remaining in the water impact? Or in the, I'm sorry, the water utility reserve as opposed to and the water impact fee reserve?
So right now, I'm still finalizing last year's numbers all the way, like getting our reserve numbers solid. But I'm going to estimate that we have about twenty-three million dollars in overall fund balance in the water you and the water fund. That's both the water impact fee and the water utility. The water impact fee is about three point three million dollars in the hole. If we were to finish all these projects and use all of the impact fee money that we're asking for you tonight, there'll probably be about four and a half to five million dollars in the hole. And the water utility is subsidizing that. That said, the water utility still does have seventeen million dollars in addition to what they're subsidizing the water impact fee for capital projects and improvements in the water fund.
As as you recall, the the council. We can blame Mr. Anderson because I think he was on the council back then, voted to raise water rates because we didn't have enough capital. With us doing this and reducing the money and capital and subsidizing the water impact fees, is the reserve fund still adequate to meet the needs of the bonding and those kind of things?
That's a great question, and the answer is yes. So that calculation is done at the end of each fiscal year. And that calculation is do water revenues less the operational costs, not capital, operational costs? Is there one point two percent or one point two debt service ratio? Meaning I have twenty percent in addition to revenue less operations and I have twenty percent left. I have to have a net income of twenty percent of revenue in order to meet my debt service coverage. Okay. And yes, the answer is my current rates definitely hold that true. So what it does is, is it requires that twenty percent hits two contributions to reserves at the end of each year. And then we have the ability to pull that out and invest it into capital into the system. And that's really the intention of that is that they want to make sure that when you issue debt, you're just not trying to get by, that you're actually also maintaining the system that you currently have in place.
Councilmember Bennett.
This is a question that I'm going to ask on behalf of the the regular citizens since I don't have the informed background to be able to ask a really insightful question. But what would you say is the overall direction that the water fund is heading right now? Are we able to maintain using the existing water rates or are we going down over time? If a resident were to come to me and say, you know, my rates are changing, then would I be able to explain to them that we are actually trying to maintain as much as possible and the rates are not going up? They're they're maintaining. What what how would you answer that?
I I would say that for the last four years since we restructured the rates when I was first hired, we have not had to touch rates since then. So the council, we worked hard. We worked on so many rate structure plans and we did so many studies to see how would this influence behavior? And it's done exactly what I think that the council intended it for it to do, which is incentivize conservation and and incent and allow residential inside water use, right? That that use that you use every day and you go to the tap and you turn on and you're ready to take a shower and you can flush your toilets. But that number should not have changed much. It's if you're using excess water, it identified so many leaks in our area just by changing that water rate. We had. I would say hundreds and hundreds of people call us and say, hey, my my bill went up so much and we're like, can we come out and do, you know, see if you have a leak? And we fixed many, 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 many leaks. So I think that it it did what it was supposed to do. As far as net income on the utility fund, I think that we're still in a decent place. Of course, cost increased, the cost of water from Jordan Valley increases and the cost of labor for our operations increase as well as the cost of goods for maintaining our system on a regular basis. But I still am seeing a healthy water utility fund. And that makes me pleased to tell you that we will not be touching rates probably for the next few years as well. Unless something major changes. We're also able to continue with and and Mr. Davenport and I worked long and hard on a long-term maintenance plan. And so we have allocated several million dollars each year for him to. And so we have allocated, um, several million dollars each year for him to identify where our problem areas in the city. And let's maintain them before we have to replace them. As well as a lead pipe replacement program. So, uh, we're almost, um, completely out of debt in the water fund. We have one bond left and it's only got a few years left on it. And we will have some bonding capacity as well in the water fund. So I see it as a very healthy and fiscally responsible utility at this point. It's far different and has a whole different face than it had, um, four year, five years ago. So, good work by the council.
Councilmember Whitelock.
But from what you've said, if you did build that, I don't, I don't think it's going to do much. It's going to make your reserve go down a million point two, but it's not going to change water rates. It's not gonna, it's going to mean it's going to take a little longer for impact fees to pay it back, correct? Okay.
That's correct. And you did adopt, this is so good. You adopted a water impact fee that really represents what it should at this point. It is a lot higher than it was and I, not by like hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's, but it is substantially higher than it was because it was not paying for itself. It's very clear. You should never have a negative impact fee balance. There should be no reason. And we did. So we have a very strong impact fee study. You all went through it. And, um, and you adopted the right water impact fee. So thank you. Because I think that our recovery, um, will be pretty quick once development starts to open up, but it will be depending on development.
But water rates haven't gone down and we don't anticipate them going down, correct?
We do not anticipate those.
Right. Did you have another question? Okay. All right. Back to Ms. Stack.
Okay. Um, all right. So we, we do have three water tanks that are currently, um, under development or construction. The zone one cemetery water tank is under construction right now. Are we? Okay. We're going out for bid on construction. We're finished with design. And we have the property, which was a big deal too. So, um, this one is going near Salt Lake Community College. Um, and so we'll need this money, um, to complete the project. You already have 6 million dollars budgeted, but we know from our zone six tank construction that that will not be adequate funding. So we're asking for appropriate funding for what we'll need for the zone one tank to bid to be awarded. Or what we hope. We'll see how good our estimates were. The zone six tank is, um, almost complete. The bills have been being paid over the last six months, but we did not spend what we thought we would by June 30th. So we're asking to carry forward some more money. We also had insufficient funding on this project. I'm sorry. It's not just carry forward. This is insufficient. We budgeted 6 million dollars, but this project is more about a seven, a $7 million project. So I added a little bit of that straight in there just in case. We have a change order. It is filled with water and it's ready to be backfilled. So this project is mostly complete. So this number should hold for you. And then the zone five south water infrastructure, um, as you remember years ago, we were working with Ivory Gardner on a, an agreement to have Ivory, Ivory Gardner build a zone five south water infrastructure system. That agreement has not come to fruition. We have, Ivory did complete the engineering on this project as we requested so that we could get a better number as we worked through this agreement. The engineering and design plans we agree are good. They are what the city would be doing if we were doing the project ourselves. We've worked side by side with them. We would be purchasing the design and engineering plans from them with the intention of using them when we decide to construct the zone five south water infrastructure. So it'd be a very large project, um, well in excess of 20, 20 to 24 million dollars for transmission lines, pump station and a reserve tank. We've already purchased the property, um, that council approved that property acquisition. This would be purchasing the design and engineering plans, which have already been complete and paid for by Ivory Gardner. So we would be reimbursing them for those plans and we would own them at that point. All right. The wastewater fund or the sewer fund, um, this is the reason we're coming to you tonight. The 7800 South Sewer Line Upgrade, which is, um, needs to be done prior to the widening of 7800 South. This project came in, um, with the bid, the low bid being 1.2 million dollars higher than our original budget and estimate. Um, and so tonight we're asking for you to allow us to award that contract as you, um, as you approve the budget for this project. These sewer line upgrade needs to be done, like I said before, the widening happens on 7800 South. And then the 1300 West Sewer Line, um, we are going to ask you to just delay that project. We have a lot of projects on our plate right now in the sewer fund. And so this will likely only be delayed until next budget year, which we will bring that project back to you for approval. Okay.
I, I have a, a question on the sewer 13th West. Is 13, is that going to cause 1300 West to be redug up after already having been dug up in this particular spot for this particular cause?
This isn't, uh, well, we are not going to, um, overlay or complete the, a nice surface and then come back and, and re-dig that up. So, um, with this project, either we will wait until it's been a sufficient time and there's not a, uh, a fatigue out there for the public, or we will get it done, um, sometime next year. This may be a developer revert, uh, reimbursed project and not necessarily a city, um, project. There is a development that needs this project to go in. Uh, I believe it's the Hidden Oak subdivision. And, uh, so they may actually be building it. We may be doing a reimbursement agreement with them in a future year.
Okay. If I, if I could summarize one of my most frequently asked questions, I guess, it's why'd you dig up? Why didn't you just fix that when you had the road dug up the first time?
One of the reasons Zach is because the, uh, UDOT project needs to go first. They need to actually lower that line coming out of 90th South. So we couldn't do that earlier or we would have really liked to do that.
Yeah. And I know there's always a good answer for that. I just don't always know what the good answer is. So what we're, what we're waiting for is the 90th South construction to drop a sewer line? So that we can then connect this and go south?
So if I wanted to do this project tomorrow, the contractor would still need to wait for the 90th South, project to lower that. And we've already entered into a contract with them. It's already in the budget for them to do that work. Uh, this, this project will actually go from just outside the 90th, uh, project to the south and about to the end of stock building supply. That's where this air, that's, that is the cost of that work to go from there to there.
Okay.
Uh, and again, we're, we're, because we have to wait anyway, there's no reason to put it in this budget year if it's actually going to be next budget year, or even the one after that. We'll, we'll have to see how that all shakes out.
So I'm just going to deviate since we're talking about sewer lines in 90th South. I know that there were some, um, there was some potential commercials, um, construction on the south side of 90th. Between 13th West and 10th West that, that got, that got delayed, kiboshed, whatever you want to call it. Because of the, the sewer lines in 90th and 13th. When we're done with 90th South and with this line and the other sewer lines that we're doing on 90th, from 90th South North, is that going to fix the problem?
This will lower that line by about a foot. That may help the project that you're talking about that is actually east of 13th West. It may not help them. It depends on what their plans are, but this is as low as we can lower that sewer.
Okay. The next project that we're going to ask for, um, funding for is the Wheels Park Detention Basin. This is a carry forward, the funds that were unspent last year, but are under contract currently with the developer, or not developer, the contractor. This is out of the Stormwater Fund and it's Stormwater Impact Fee Reserves, of which we do have reserves. Um, and the last one is the IT Management Fund. So, um, last year during our, um, challenges, we, uh, the council allocated, um, 2 million dollars in recovery, um, for our infrastructure. Not just in recovery, but in building a stronger, more secure and better system moving forward. We have transferred that money over into the IT Management Fund as of June 30th. Um, and it remains unspent so far. So we have quite a few invoices coming in now to, um, add new security features into our system. And so we're asking to allocate that for the same purpose that you allocated it last year. So it just remained unspent as of June 30th because we had not resolved the issues yet. All right. So that's the last of the budget amendment. So we would bring to you, um, resolution 23041, um, amending the budget for the items that we have reviewed with you unless you have more questions. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Pack and then Councilmember Green.
Thank you Chair. Um, thanks Ms. Stack. As always comprehensive and detailed. Appreciate it. A question on all of the grants that we received, would that be attributable to our grant, uh, writer? That, that would be 100% grants that were proactively sought for due to the work of our grant writer.
Yes. Um, Jeremy Olson is our grant writer and our grants manager. And also the work of Tony Barker and, um, her legislative team. So she has done a great job of identifying, um, opportunities and, and Jeremy does the same thing. So together they have brought in well over 40 million dollars in grants in the last little while and legislated money. It's been a great.
Fantastic. Thank you. You mentioned legislative money. So, uh, when we're looking at funding lobbyist help and grant writing help, it's obvious that they have more than earned their keep for the salary and benefits they're receiving. So
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
You said resolution, but this says ordinance.
Oh, I did say resolution. Old form of government moment. Sorry.
I was gonna say, don't we have to pass this as an ordinance?
I apologize.
Requires the mayor's signature?
Yes. And I think you saw resolution 70 and I went, I'm at 41. How did that happen? But this is why we've done 41 ordinances and 70 resolutions this year. Wow. I think I've done half of them, it feels like.
All right. Any other questions? Councilmember Bennett.
Just one quick one. Um, being as I'm in IT, uh, IT is a constantly changing field that is extremely time-based as we wait for something to occur. New challenges are brought into the, the Ecos. And, um, I'm just wondering what kind of a plan the city has for addressing those type of, uh, IT-based issues and how they're being resolved.
Um, I actually taught a national webinar on this yesterday. So, um, that is a very good question. Um, until our challenge that we had last June, um, until the cyber attack that we experienced and the level of attack that we experienced, um, and our response. We had a plan. We have an incredible IT director who has an extensive knowledge and, um, his team is very good. They had put a plan together of which we were going to take about two years to implement. Increasing security, changing systems. I mean, it was an overall network redesign. But we were very cognizant of the financial constraints that, that were before us as well. The IT fund did not have those kinds of reserves available. The general fund did have reserves. But I believe that this cyber attack really brought to the forefront the importance of the investment in our infrastructure and the maintenance, constant maintenance of our infrastructure. So we have diversified our digital holdings considerably since this attack. We have brought in additional, um, continually monitored access and multi-factor authentication, different than the one that we had previously because clearly it didn't work. So, um, we have the state of the art. We have been networking with other CIOs throughout the, the state and several other cities that have reached out to us and we've been comparing security plans. I believe we have a very strong plan in place and we have the best of the best vendors now in place. And, um, I'm very hopeful for our future as we move this forward and we're moving very quickly, which is some pain to our staff, right? We have moved people from, you know, one system to another within a 30-day period and they aren't trained on it. And it's new and different. We're trying to do all this recovery at the same time. They've been very patient with us, but, um, let me assure you that we have invested in our infrastructure and in our security and we're very confident in the system that we've built moving forward.
Excellent. And, um, I would just like to encourage the mayor's office to do as much as possible to get this information out to the public. Because knowing that we have a secure system that we're basing our government off of and the amount of grants that are being received by the city, I mean, these are major issues that the city should be able to put out there to the public and say, we're working for you. So if that information can be, uh, presented in an effective way, I think the public would really appreciate knowing that about the city.
Every Durant dollar that we bring in saves a, a tax dollar. Yeah.
Couldn't help but notice Connor's head back there nodding in agreement as you were talking about some of the challenges and, uh, some of the strengths and some of the, the intense efforts they've gone to. Um, one of the little things that came up was we've been dislo, or, um, dislocated, is that the right word? Over in this building while City Hall's been under construction and IT has done a lot of, a lot of work to be able to host public meetings and even expand the ability for us to reach out to the public. And as soon as they get it figured out here, now they have to go figure it out in the new building with all the new challenges and everything else. So thank you to them. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? I'm not seeing any lights come on. Therefore, we will open the public hearing. For those who are interested in speaking to this budget amendment, now would be your time to do so. We are not, uh, we, we do not have online participation for this one. This is just for those who are here in person. Therefore, if you would like, please come up to the microphone.
But there's a lot of two people.
Four. My two count.
I have Henry and Oliver are really going to be knowledgeable.
Henry, Oliver, did you guys want to talk about the budget amendment that's been proposed? Okay. One, one of the things that was on there was using money to put towards the Wheels Park. This is the park by your new school that has all the tracks and all the places to ride bikes. Is that something that you wanted to see or no?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Henry. And for the record, that was Henry McConaughey, age 10. Resident of West Jordan. All right. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak tonight? All right. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and turn to the council. Councilmember Green.
I'm going to move to approve ordinance number 23 dash 41, uh, amending the city's budget for FY '24. I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember Jacob. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Quick.
Vice Chair Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Chair McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
All right. That brings us to city council remarks. Does anybody have any closing comments they'd like to make? We'll start with Councilmember Pack.
Thank you Chair. If, uh, people haven't had a chance to look at the weekly reports that staff sends out, boy, the last two weeks, some major drug busts. And so kudos to our awesome police officers. The pictures on there are interesting. I learned more about drugs that I didn't know. I'm glad I didn't know, but now I'm more educated on different types of drugs and what they're sniffing around for. And right, no pun intended. Maybe, maybe there was a pun intended. But it was also troublesome to see how much fentanyl has made it into West Jordan. It wasn't just, wasn't just marijuana. You know, we've got cocaine and some fentanyl. So, so kudos to our police department for being able to catch that before it's disseminated out in the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
So just one comment. Um, Mr. Davenport, I, I think you heard some concern from Councilmember Whitelock about, uh, well eight. I think that what we ought to do, and this is just my personal opinion, is that we ought to, to look at tracking the costs. And if the costs are in fact stabilizing or going down, let's maximize our utility to build the well at the best possible cost. And if that means building it sooner than later, I'd rather, it, it's better to have the well if it works and have it, have it for an emergency because you never I'd rather, i- it's better to have the well if it works and have it, have it for an emergency, because you never, you know, a tank. You know, tank could rupture, something weird could happen. And I, I would just think. I'd want that as a, as an emergency water supply. And so if we could build that sooner than later, I would be more happy, I would be happy with that if we can get the cost to where it's appropriate.
With, with that, just to give it a little more finality. Um, I, I think I would ask if there are three, uh, well, four on the council. I'm gonna make sure I'm restating this appropriately. There are four on the council who would like to respectfully request the mayor's office to look to see if that should be something brought to us in a subsequent budget adjustment. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. And, and half of those of the, half of the residents in, in attendance tonight as well. All right, any other, any other remarks? I would like to uh welcome councilmember Bennett back. Um, I appreciate the service that you provided on the council previously. I appreciate your continued involvement with the city while you haven't been formally serving. Uh, in this capacity and appreciate your willingness to return uh for the short period to help us out for a little bit. Thank you. Good to have you. The only administrative item I have is if the council would be amenable, I'd like to see if after we adjourn, we could get a quick picture with uh Mr. Bennett. So all seven of us. That said.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by councilmember Green, second by councilmember Bennett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.